On Tuesday, July 30th, I call the meeting to order. This is just a regular committee meeting of the Grafton School Committee. We will open the floor to public comment if there's any public comment at this time. Come forward and have a seat at the desk. Before you start, I'll just review briefly because we haven't done this in a while. We have a few rules around public comment. You get three minutes. You can state whatever it is you'd like after you state your name and address. And you won't get a response from the committee tonight. But if it requires a response, we'll be getting back to you in the future. Okay? Leora, would you mind just timing in case?
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready, you can go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Davina Premraj. I live at 121 McGill Drive. And I actually grew up going to all the Grafton High Schools. So I, or all the Grafton Public Schools. So I've been at Grafton from kindergarten to grade 12 where I graduated. And I actually just graduated college. So I just wanted to share some of my comments about the gifted policy. So from grades, I think, one through three, I was in the gifted program at high school, which allowed me to be in their program where I got more specific help for where I was at in subjects like math and science and English, which actually helped me when I was doing math later on in high school. So it just helped me learn better because my educational needs were kind of different than the other kids in my class. And I also got to connect with other students whose needs were a little bit different. And I've actually used these experiences to teach other kids math. So I've actually been a math tutor for the past five or six years. And because I've had experiences with educational curricula that have been more tailored to my needs, I can better meet the needs of my students because a lot of times they're in classes where there are lots of students. So the teachers and professors, especially in university, can't really meet everyone's specific needs. So if we keep this policy here, we're better meeting the needs of students that have these requirements. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. And I appreciate you taking the time to hear me out and hope you keep the policy in.
Thank you, Davina. Can you just tell me what your class year was here at Grafton?
I graduated in 2020.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Great year.
What a great year to graduate. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Meroz. I'm an advocacy co-chair for the Massachusetts Association for Gifted Ed. And it's called MAEG. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your commitment to the educational success of all the children in Grafton. I'm here tonight to emphasize the importance of retaining policy IHBB, the one regarding gifted and talented education. MAEG reviews school committee policies and district practices across the state to identify how they serve advanced and gifted students. Effective policies are critical in defining and sustaining educational opportunities for all students, especially those who don't fit the standard traditional school models. Policy IHBB is vital because it signals to the Grafton Public Schools and to the community the need to meet the unique needs of advanced and gifted students. These students require both productive challenge and support to develop academically and, more importantly, to cultivate the many non-academic competencies that are far more critical for achieving happiness and success in later life. Removing policy IHBB would be detrimental in our view. Without specific policies, our standards-based system focused on grade-level standards often overlooks the needs of advanced and gifted children. These students frequently feel unvalued, misunderstood, and isolated, which can lead to significant mental and emotional distress, anxiety, and even disengagement from school entirely. In my recent correspondence last week, I included the 2019 Legislative Report: Gifted Education in Massachusetts: A Policy and Practice Review. I don't know if any of you had a chance to review it or not. It underscores the importance of robust gifted education policies. Since 2019, the state of Massachusetts has recognized that the need to support all students includes advanced and gifted ones specifically and those from all backgrounds. Yesterday, Acting Desi Commissioner Russell Johnston actually confirmed that the state is in the process of hiring a new manager of advanced learning, whose job in part will be to assist districts in this effort. While MAEG can suggest additional improvements to policy IHBB, given the length of your agenda tonight, I urge you simply to retain, for now, the version as it has stood for the last 20 years. Although it could say more to ensure that advanced and gifted students are served better, IHBB affirms that this Grafton School Committee values the full range of students and that you're making a policy commitment to fostering an environment where all children can be led to succeed. Thank you for listening to my comment.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right. Thank you, everyone. Seeing no further public comment, we're going to move on to approving some minutes. Anybody is free to, obviously, I'm not going to throw you out. You are all free to stay as long as you wish. I would just ask that when you do leave, if you do close that door, just be careful because it can slam very loudly. Otherwise, you are free to stay or go as you please. So we're going to go to the first set of minutes, which, because I have them open, we're going to start with May 7th, which I think is actually, no, that's the first set. May 7th. I'll take a motion.
I motion to approve May 7th minutes as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any commentary, changes? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? As opposed? Okay. Motion passes 5-0. The next set of minutes.
Actually, Mrs. Mark, I abstained because I wasn't here for that meeting.
I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me know. It's 4-0. Okay. June 11th. I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion that the committee accept the minutes of June 11th.
You second that motion?
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I had one thing. I just have to find it. It was written on the version of the agenda that I left at my house. And it wasn't that the font color changes on page eight? I didn't notice that. I was reading, but all of a sudden I couldn't see it anymore. It was something I said that doesn't make any sense the way it's written in the minutes. So I'll just leave it alone because I know what I said. Oh, wait. I know where it is now. It was under HR. Because I had asked Mandy during the HR report if we had a list of retirees. And it doesn't say that I asked that, but it says that she can get us the list. But then she gave it to us during the meeting and we read it out. So that just needs to be clarified. But other than that, I'm content. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. 5-0. Thank you. We're going to go to warrants.
Could take a while. Madam Chair.
Yeah. Hold on. Oh, I just lost my thing. But go ahead.
Go ahead. I moved that we accept warrant 47 dated 5/23/2024 in the amount of $332,575.45.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair. I moved that the committee accept warrant 48 from 5/30 to 1/24 in the amount of $181,059.96.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All right. Motion carries. If I'm moving too fast, just say, Madam Chair, you're moving too fast. But I know we have a lot to get through tonight. I'm trying to be efficient.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I moved that the committee accept warrant 49 from 6/5/2024 in the amount of $375,221.77.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chair. I moved that the committee accept warrant 50 dated 6/13/2024 in the amount of $193,364.35.
Second.
Thanks. Nice job, Rebecca. I got lost there in the middle of that number.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chair. I moved that the committee accept warrant 51 dated 6/20/2024 in the amount of $548,473.7.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chair. I moved that the committee accept warrant 52 dated 6/27/2024 in the amount of $64,127.47.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chair. I moved that the committee accept warrant 53 dated 6/30/2024 in the amount of $771,316.7.
Okay, second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? We're a little rusty because it's summer. All right. All those in favor?
Good job.
All right. Motion carry.
That's good practice.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Just keep going.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
All right.
Let's keep going.
Now we're, yeah, let's keep going. All right. We're going to open the policy portion of our meeting.
Right.
We're going to go in the order, I believe these match. Do they not?
They should, yeah.
Okay. So if I call out a policy name and it is not next on your list, let me know. Because I know we have a bunch of lists floating around now. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to ask for policy BBB, School Committee Membership. Laura, what would you?
Yeah. Well, Leora, too, and Jay as well. Did you guys want to do this first?
No. I was gonna.
No, we were going to show, did someone come up on the screen?
That would be great.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
That would be fabulous.
Hey, look at that.
Amazing.
Thank you, Mandy.
Okay. Since we don't want to. So just a quick refresher. So these were policies, they're kind of mixed in because we broke it up into two sections. First were ones that didn't make it over to our, so in general, they didn't make it over to MAS-C because MAS-C didn't have a policy to match. And we hadn't reviewed in the past four years. So going back, that was sort of our discussion. So then, thanks to Christie, she kind of helped pull a bunch together that were just kind of floating out there that we really needed to make a decision on. Jay went through them as well and made some recommendations. So some of these are recommended that, yep, you know what? We should look at them and we should put them back on MAS-C because they're important to Grafton, they're important to us. And some of them are, we're going to recommend as a committee or as a subcommittee to you guys that we want to delete the policies. Doesn't mean it deletes, you'll hear when we go through it, what's going on. For instance, this is a great way to kick it off. BBB, the school committee shall, I'm not going to read them out loud. That'll take us all night. But it consists of five members. That's in our town charter. It doesn't need to be a policy. Deleting the policy doesn't mean that we no longer exist. It just means that we recommend as a subcommittee that it shouldn't be.
It's not a policy.
It's not a policy. And that's what we found most of these to be. There are definitely several that we're going to recommend as a first reading and that we can take another, you know, that we should have had on them even though MAS-C doesn't have a policy. Okay. So thanks, everybody, with your patience through this process. And we're almost through. It's just super exciting. And then we can get back to the work of making good quality policies.
I have some discussion on this policy. Is that okay? So policy BBB, yes, it states about the five members of the school committee. MAS-C actually does want you to recognize that in the policy manual. And they don't want you to have this policy. Now, as we all know, with the policies that we've taken over from MAS-C, these are kind of guidelines. And what they do is they put notes because they want to make sure that you make your policy manual your own. So that being said, policy BBB, School Committee Legal Status, which we have adopted, has a few notes. And one of those notes includes adding a statement under the code for the number of school committee members and the length of their regular term. So given this, I recommend to the board that we eliminate policy BBB, as Ms. Austin has said, but we also comply with MAS-C's recommendation with policy BB by adding the appropriate information, which we once held in our old policy BBB. And such policy subcommittee will need to take that adjustment and bring it back to the school committee for a reading.
Manager? Oh, Christie, can you slow down? That was super fast.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Appreciate it because we're going to be here a long time, I think. But which policy are you referring to?
So policy BBB.
Policy BBB.
Which is, we took it on as Mass Association of School Committees. It's called BB, School Committee Legal Status.
Okay, hold on. Yep. School Committee Legal Status, it's in our policy. But you recommend that there should be.
There is a note in that.
Yep.
That Mass Association of School Committees recommends that we add
Yep.
the members and the length of term, which is what we had in our policy BBB.
Before it got moved over.
So that needs to be added to policy BBB.
Okay. But that's a separate policy. So what we should do, as you recommended, is add that to our next subcommittee member.
Right.
Thank you.
But I just don't want to lose that information.
I know you won't.
So.
So that's good. All right. Thank you for that. Let's see. I'm just going to start another doc so I don't lose it myself. But back to this policy that we're discussing now, I still recommend, we recommend removal. I'm going to have to take a deeper look onto BB because I think I'm looking at something differently. So we'll just have to sync our policy.
Let me just say that in my experience, having to deal with town bylaws, town charter, it is always better to not repeat policies. Because if you remove it someplace, and the charter rules, the charter, you know, master and law rules, and then the charter. And if it exists somewhere else and then it gets changed in the charter, this isn't something that would get changed in the charter. But just as a rule, it's better to have a policy in as few places as possible to eliminate this kind of having to track stuff down and whatnot. So if this is in the town charter, and I know that it is, I agree with removing it.
Yes, I agree with removing it with the thought that we're going to add it to policy BB.
That we'll take a look at BB and we'll make sure, yep, that it gets up to date. If it's not. Yep.
Is there any further discussion on BBB? BBB. Nothing further?
No.
All right. Refresh my memory. If we delete, we delete now. There's not a second reading, correct? That's what I thought.
It does need to be, this is something I learned recently, a two-thirds vote.
Oh.
Deletion of policy.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh. Learned something new today.
I learned it also. So I had never, I don't, I don't think we've ever had not.
Interesting. All right.
Madam Chair, I move that we delete policy BBB.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? All as opposed? Extentions. Motion carries by the required two-thirds. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. BGF.
Okay. This one, we think, is important to keep. So we're bringing it in to, for a first reading. If anybody has any recommended suggestions that they'd like to update this with, now is the time to discuss it. And we'll make the edits and bring it back for a second reading.
So I would like to make note on this. We currently have in our manual, BFG? BGF, I'm sorry. Now, the reason that this was placed on my audit is missing is because the old policy BGF was a petition to review policy decision. That was placed on my audit is missing because the new BGF that we currently hold on MAS-C is actually the same as our old BGF-2, which is Suspension of Policy. That being said, I do not recommend that we eliminate our new BGF policy that currently exists in our manual to replace it with the one that you're about to read.
So we have a policy, sorry.
Go ahead.
We have BGAP, which is a suspension of policies. That's where it says the suspended by two-thirds vote. This is policy to review policy decisions. So there are two.
They're two different policies. So if we're going to, but we already have a BGF. So I don't know if you're looking to add to that BGF by putting this.
They're just numbered. They need to be changed how they're coded.
Okay.
They're not the same policy.
No, I know that they're not the same policy.
Yeah. So, yeah, but you're right. There's already a BGF, so we need to code it differently because they're not the same. Suspension of policy is what happened today where people came to say, hey, we're, you know, we're worried you're going to eliminate a policy. They're coming and following. So you're absolutely right. We just need to come up with a different code for it.
Right. Because our other suspension of policy was BGF-2.
Sure. And now it's just BGF.
Now it's just BGF.
Yep. So we just need to code it differently as a subcommittee. So we'll do that. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up.
But my other question to this is, in Dr. Cummings' recommendations, he had said that this does not the current practice. So what is the current practice? It's not reflective of our current practices. What was on the statement that you had given us?
Jay, if you need help, I can probably jump in. I don't think people have just been. Okay. I can just talk.
Go ahead.
Or not. Maybe I'll just sit in silence. I was just going to say, I think people don't typically do this. It's not reflected in, we haven't been making people do that. So this is a good policy to go by. We haven't actually had many people come against any of our policy decisions. I can't think of many times that's happened. Maybe you with your binders when we talked about the kindergarten and you came.
Yeah.
You know, maybe you followed it. But I just don't think it has happened too much. Maybe that's why you said that, Jay. But I could be wrong because.
Well, then I guess my other question is if it doesn't happen, why do we need the policy?
Because I think, well, I'm, is it okay, Madam Chair?
Oh, can I take this one?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's important to have a process on the books. We're in an age where people are, and they should, ask questions, challenge things. And we went through this a couple of years ago with the library materials policy. We took a look at that. We made it a little bit stronger so that it was clearer. If a member of the community wanted to challenge a library book, we had a process on the books. Because when you don't have a process on the books, that's how you get into trouble. You end up with somebody who gets very angry because they don't feel that their rights are being met and that they're being heard. So I agree that we need to have this policy. If the policy subcommittee decides to bring back this policy with a different code or maybe bring the other one back with this code and use this code for this policy, whatever you guys decide you're going to do. But I do agree that we need to have this policy. There needs to be a procedure on the books for this.
And we definitely follow, we follow this. The one that we don't follow is that really long, multi-page one about instructional materials that people have an issue with, with all these outdated forms. You would just follow this policy.
Okay. I mean, I'm just going off of what you had sent me, the recommendations. That's why, that's why I was asking that.
The other thing, oh, I'm sorry. The other thing I would, I don't have to apologize. I'm the chair. Shh. The other thing I would say is, the word petition, I think, trips people up. I think when they see the word petition as a verb, to petition, they think that literally means a petition with signatures. That is not what the word means in this context. So no, we have not received paper petitions with signatures from individuals challenging a policy.
I had a petition in my, when I.
In my time on the committee, we didn't have that. So I just wanted to clear that up, that that's, that is the correct usage of the word. It can be an individual person that comes forward and presents their case to the superintendent. It's not a signed petition. Because if it were a signed petition, then we would have rules about actual numbers of signatures and having them verified by the clerk's office and whatnot. And we don't do that, correct?
Correct. With good reason. If somebody's, one individual has an issue, that's plenty. I don't need seven or 70.
Madam Chair. Yes. We do, and we updated this a little bit in terms of making it more modern, in terms of it can be electronic. They don't have to bring a letter to Jay's office.
Yeah.
So I think it's appropriate that people have an avenue.
100%. I agree. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to bring BGF, well, as a first reading, petitions to review policy decisions. Just a reminder, our next meeting, we'll bring it up with updated code.
For a second.
For a second reading, and then we'll finalize it.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. No, I got you. Okay. All those in favor? All opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Leora, you want to take this one? I don't need to talk the whole time.
No, it's fine. Development of school, CHA, Development of School District Procedures. We recommended this for deletion because it really says nothing and doesn't really reflect any kind of reality of what happens. There's no upside to it.
Christie?
Yes. So MAS-C has a reference policy coded CHA/CHHC, Development and Disvention of Procedures, which is similar, very similar to our old, to this policy. I recommend we consider adopting that to replace this. I believe this policy is important because ensures collaborative and inclusive implementation of school committee policies by the superintendent.
Can you say the code again?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Well, Leora, if it's okay, we'll take a look at it and we can bring it back for a first reading. And if we still recommend deletion, we'll make that recommendation next time, if that's okay.
Fine.
So you want to withdraw the motion?
I do. Well, did we make the motion? Oh, well, that's.
Well, it's true you did.
We're going to make a motion.
I don't think we withdrew it yet. I think we'll just.
All right.
We'll bring it back.
Take the recommendation and take a look at it.
Okay. CHCB.
So this one, we would like to replace with the MAS-C CHCA, which is the approval of handbooks and directives. We included that for the committee to see below.
Just as a note, we already have this in our manual, CHCA, in the MAS-C manual currently.
Fantastic.
Is it exactly the same?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great. That's work for me. All right.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
CHCA, as written, talks about handbooks and directives pertaining to conduct of students. Clicking back over. I apologize for the delay.
Wait, what are we talking about?
The.
What policy are you referencing, Mrs. Mark?
CHC, so CHCA, Approval of Handbooks and Directives, talks about handbooks for students. CHCB is faculty and staff handbooks. They are different.
You're right. Yep. You're absolutely right.
So.
So we need both of them.
We need them both. So if we have CHCA, which says, Approval of Handbooks and Directives, Principal and Consultation of School Council, blah, 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 Student Conduct. We do need CHCB.
Yes. I feel like if combined on.
Well, unless we feel like we don't, we don't want faculty and staff handbooks in the policies.
Do we have, do we have faculty handbooks?
It talks about conduct of employees also.
We just didn't want anything too prescriptive in there. Correct.
Yes. Then I feel that the current.
I see what happened. Yeah.
Yep.
I see. Okay. Well, I would like to amend and say, I think we would like to just keep as is our CHCB, Faculty and Staff Handbook, and add that back. And we'll take that as a first reading. Sorry. I think when we were in our, I know what happened.
I knew too.
You just got to.
Well, one piece of feedback I have for the MAS-C policy people is that it is so difficult to go back and forth between our manual and the official. There's nothing at the top in the bar there that says Grafton. You have no idea where you are. They need to figure something out, like, I don't know, change the color of the side or something. They need to figure something out, like, I don't know, change the color of the side or something so you know this is Grafton, cuz I'm toggling back and forth between the two and you can't tell.
I know, I get lost a lot, but it, it's been fine and, um, no, and, and it's been great to have everybody's help with us cuz it's been a lot and we really appreciate it, so that's why we're doing this kind of in the summertime, so we can just get these, you know.
All right, so you want to.
So, I'd like to bring this as a first reading.
Today?
Today.
Yes.
And, and then we'll have another second reading, um. And I think I just, we do have handbooks for, so.
Mm-hmm, we do.
Right.
Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, accept, uh, policy CHCB as a first reading.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, is there any further discussion? All is in favor? All is opposed?
Thanksy.
All right.
Okay.
First reading.
Let's see what's next.
CI.
It's like you're going through a test at school.
Temporary administrative arrangements.
Temporary, uh, okay.
This is just.
Temporary administrative arrangements, first reading.
Yeah. We'd like to keep this in kind of the same kind of thing, um, I think it's common sense, but, and I don't think if something did happen, God forbid, people would rush through the policy, but I think it's very, I, we thought it was important to just have something there in place, like, nope, this is what we need to do, um. And then I do see a typo.
Isn't it in the last paragraph?
It sure is.
Yeah.
There's a couple, I was gonna bring them up, but go ahead, have at it. It's the their, his or her, they, he or she.
Yeah.
It's they, it's their or they.
Yeah, it didn't, when it got, um, the.
Accepted, the changes accepted.
Yeah, it didn't.
Yep.
Um.
So, obviously we'll use that.
Um, can I ask Jay a question and I don't, if, if you don't wanna answer, Jay, that's fine, but in the, in the effort that, in the event that you are unavailable, is Mandy kind of the assistant superintendent, quote unquote?
I, I.
Or Frank?
Not, not every time.
Not every time.
Whoever's kind of around based on schedule usually.
Okay.
Now, that I don't have an assistant superintendent, I talk to two of the directors, so that we overlap.
Yep.
It's pretty rare, knock on wood, that amount.
And I think, I think it's important to have this codified too, so that, you know, it, it does talk about keeping the chair updated, I think that's important.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Hundred percent.
And the chair can keep the committee updated.
Yep.
So that you, you, you don't have to take that extra step. Um, no, I think this is good. Any one wanna make a motion?
You didn't know the chair was acting superintendent, maybe?
I am definitely not qualified for that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to recommend, um, the committee, uh, take policy CI, temporary administrative arrangements as a first reading.
Very second.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor? Carries. Extended school year, ICB.
ICB, it's not extended school year, actually, that's different.
Oh.
This is high school remedial summer school regulations, this is for students who are failing classes.
Oh, well, my list is.
Yeah, and we recommend deleting this because again, it isn't how this is done, this doesn't exist here.
Christie?
Yes. I do agree that we should delete this, but in correlation with this being deleted, we are currently holding, um, policy, MASC policy IHCA, which is summer school, which is in essence the same policy that we are deleting now. So I'd like to recommend to the policy subcommittee to review that policy and bring it back.
Take a look, I think this is a little different, I think this one is actually more appropriate to how it is, um, cuz I don't feel that it's as prescriptive, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I just started talking. Uh, I don't feel as, it's as prescriptive as us.
Okay.
Offering.
Well, you know what, you know what I would say at this point is, I think what we should do is if there are other policies that the committee needs to take a look at, we can write those down, but we need to move because we're on the fifth policy and it is seven thirty. So, um, I think that the, these are important recommendations, but I don't think we have to discuss them, I think we write them down and policy subcommittee is, is tasked with that and.
Agreed, yeah.
Good.
Let's keep our discussion to this policy and deleting it.
Yeah, and we're happy to take a look at any policy, of course.
Yeah.
That program's brought up, we're not gonna not look at them, but we won't do it live.
How, um, how do we feel about deleting this policy that hasn't been touched in almost ten years?
Do we even have some, summer school's different than like ESY.
Than ESY, it is.
We don't, do we even have?
Yeah, uh, we have credit recovery, but it's not self-contained like it used to be where it's just at Grafton High School.
Okay.
It's not.
So it's collaborative with other schools, a lot of it's virtual now, so you could have a policy, but it would be very different.
Okay.
I move, we, I move we delete ICB, high school remedial summer school regulations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed, extensions, motion carries. So that is gone. Okay, IE.
School district organization.
Yep, that's what I have.
Yep, okay, great. We, uh, recommend that we delete this as it really serves no purpose. Other than to lay out where our grades worked.
Any other comments or questions? I, I really don't feel like this is something the school committee should be in charge of, it's. It's, if we over-enroll and we need to move students around, we shouldn't have to have a school committee meeting.
Building logistics, it's not, right, yeah.
Agreed. It just doesn't even, it's not.
No. All right, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I rec, I make a motion to, um, for the school committee to delete IE, school district organization.
I second it.
All right, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? All is opposed? Motion carries. IHB dash R. Special education policies and procedures. No?
Leor, did you wanna?
It doesn't, yeah, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
We recommend removing it, it, um. This particular one really does not, um, provide any kind of guidance or protections or anything, it's not good policy and it, we have special education covered under all their policies, so there's no need to include this one.
So we have, I wanna make sure I'm in the graph. Yeah, I know, I do that all the time, we have the IHB special education, uh, special instructional programs and accommodations, this is a reference doc which we're trying, if possible, not all, to get through. So we just wanna make sure that this isn't eliminating policies from special education.
Correct, we wanna be very clear that we're not doing that.
Yes, no, this is just.
Nope, not at all.
Yeah, we're not sure why.
It's procedural, which you know I'm not a fan.
Exactly. And neither are we.
All right.
That was our thought with that.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Take a motion.
Lost my packet. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to delete IHBR, special education policies and procedures.
Second to motion.
Motion made and seconded, any, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor? All right, motion carries, thank you.
Next one is gifted and talented, um, and the committee is just bringing this as a first reading, um, we didn't have any additional, um, changes that we want to see right now, to the.
So this is replacing one that was not carried over?
It just wasn't carried over, um, again, cuz, yeah, there wasn't a match and, but we feel like it, um, is important to bring over, um, to make sure that it was there.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Do we have a methodology for identifying gifted and talented students?
Dr. Cummings.
That's my issue with this policy is it doesn't mean anything if we have no identification criteria, so I would love to think about that. If we wanna have something, it needs to mean something and I don't think it means anything currently.
I guess what I would like to say is that, um, I've had two kids go through, uh, almost all the way through now, the public schools. Um, and at different, at different times in my, my kid's education, uh, teachers have identified, uh, either that they need more instruction or different kind of instruction.
Right.
And the teachers kind of make that call, they don't label the students as gifted and talented, but they see a student who is finishing the math faster. Or, you know, can write a three-sentence paragraph in, in, in a minute and a half and it's not challenging for them anymore. Um, and they, and they tend to, in, in ways that I find fascinatingly subtle in many cases, they group those students together. And I think you know this, but I just kinda wanna say it out there for everybody else.
Absolutely.
Um, so, I guess what I'm saying is that I trust our teachers to use differentiated instruction appropriately and what this policy says for me is differentiated instruction is what we use to educate our gifted population. We don't have a gifted program, we don't have a testing situation, we don't identify students because at any given time, students can be further ahead or further behind.
Agreed.
And I know that that doesn't describe a gifted and talented child. But I also know that there are children who are gifted in some areas and not in other areas, um, that might excel in math and science and struggle in reading.
Yep.
Or vice versa, and that changes sometimes from year to year. Um, so I've been very satisfied with how teachers that my children have had, have identified and either challenged or assisted my children with their education. Um, and it's funny because I was, I was talking in my house about this policy. Um, one of my children spoke up and said, oh, I remember in third grade when Mrs. so-and-so, you know, had me and two other kids sitting at another table, you know, working on this really cool project because she had to teach the other students something else. I find that that's really effective and, and the kids don't even realize it's happening until they realize it's happening. And I like that, I think that's better than putting kids in a group all the time and setting them above.
I one hundred percent agree.
I could say more, but I'm not gonna. Um, I like, I like how we use differentiated instruction in the district, I think it's very successful. Um, it's not gonna be successful all of the time, I understand that. Um, and I do believe we have a policy elsewhere to talk specifically about differentiated instruction.
Madam Chair, I think if, if the committee wants to have a larger discussion and we wanna put our resources behind a gifted and talented program, that's something that, you know, that, that would be a lot more than a policy on it. Um, you know, if the policy makes people, you know, feel, feel great, you know, that's, it's, it's fine.
That's basically all this is doing, however, I think to everybody's point and even, um, to some of the public comment, it is not robust, it is not.
Nope.
Prescriptive, it is.
It's not a well-written policy.
No.
But if we were gonna rewrite it, we couldn't because it's not really where we are.
But if I could speak on this, I've spoken with Mrs. Mannan, our curriculum director, and she said that we use three identifying factors
to identify a gifted student, the MCAS, the STAR exam, and their in-class work. On that point, we are actually piloting, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Cummings, a gifted program, am I correct?
Um, no.
Isn't there, the district intends to utilize the John Hopkins Center for Talented Youth?
In math.
In mathematics, yes.
We, in, absolutely, we have in the past, we're more robust this year, but not in all encompassment.
I, I agree, so I don't believe that this policy is just a policy to make people feel good. I believe it's a necessary policy to help our gifted and talented students in the district.
Right, and I think the committee's all for it.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think we're all agree with.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, bring IHBB gifted and talented education as a first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote, all those in favor?
Great.
Awesome.
All right, moving on, um, this is a form and the next one should be our, this was pandemic, which definitely shouldn't be here anymore. Um, which is why it was removed, um, we recommend removing it, uh, we're getting, trying to get rid of all forms, they don't belong to policy. This doesn't mean you can't, we have a, um, application to do homeschooling, we do have a policy about that and what you should do, but we're just getting rid of the form in our policy.
Super, I'll take a motion.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we remove policy IHBG dash E, request for approval of home education plan.
Second.
Motion being seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Thank you. All right. Um, okay.
Will I pick the phone?
Sure. Uh, I, I, IA grouping instruction, we recommend removal, um, this is happening, we don't need it in policy. It's left to the teachers how they group students and educate them.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change where we're doing this, to move things along a little bit, we're gonna take a motion first and then we'll discuss.
Yes.
So that's how it should be done anyway.
Yes.
So if somebody would like to make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we remove IIA grouping instruction.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion on this? All right, move to a vote, all those in favor? All right.
Great. Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll go with it.
Okay.
Um, just 'cause I remember I had comments quickly, IIB, we'd like to keep this, bring this back as a first read for class size, um.
Okay, just go ahead and make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move IIB class size as a first read, maybe I don't even have to talk about it.
Second.
Second.
Maybe everybody agrees.
Is there any discussion, any questions, concerns?
I do have questions and concerns on this policy. I've seen the projections for the coming year, and in the projections, it shows that class sizes for grades K through six, somewhere upwards of twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth students, and in addition, some high school classes will reach thirty students. I think in this policy, we're saying the maximum class size will, for K through six would be twenty-two and seven through twelve is twenty-five, and then the second sentence kinda just null and voids the first sentence where we can.
I'm sorry, no, it doesn't, it says recommends.
Okay, I, I don't think we can agree, i- if, if this policy is meant to do that, recommends twenty-two and twenty-five, but we're not even doing that, those numbers today, what does this policy prove to us? We're not adhering to it now.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Um, we had this discussion, um, or something like it, and we thought about that, exactly what Christie said, and we wanted to keep it because we are kind of, if we're thinking about, um, upcoming overrides, upcoming, like, if we think about our policies as partly our values, which I think our budget is, our policies, our strategic plan all go together, this is our recommendation, and I think if we take this away and we're like willy-nilly and then we're going out knocking on doors and asking people, like, we wanna bring these class sizes down, we need funding to do that, and we've gotten rid of this policy, I feel like it kinda just, you know. I do, I understand kind of what Christie's saying and it, it is always subject because, look, there's no policy police that are gonna come and lock up if we have twenty-six kids in a class, but we're saying, you know, we wanna do better, we're trying to do better, and that's why we wanted to keep this policy.
I think it might be more useful if we didn't put numbers and said that we strive for small class sizes or something to that effect. I think once you put in a number, now we're, we're kind of married to it.
Can the Madam? No, go ahead.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think once you take out numbers, then it's completely meaningless, what, what does small mean? That's i- in the eye of the beholder, I think in the same way that, um, we talked about, uh, making sure that we, um, that we refer to talented and gifted students because that's part of our values. I think as Laura said, our values are that we wanna do the best we can and have class sizes that, um, are advantageous to our students, even if we don't always meet those because of budgetary or facility concerns.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
I also think it's valuable to have a tangible goal and putting a number makes that tangible, it's like we're closer to our goal, we've met our goal, or we are nowhere near our goal and.
So how are we gonna attain this goal, are we asking the superintendent?
Excuse me, can you go through the chair, please?
It's Chair, Madam Chair, my question is how, at this point, are we planning on attaining this goal? Are we asking the superintendent to hire more staff to attain this goal currently?
It may have come up last fall when we were in, uh, like, idyllic stages of the budget development, but once reality hits, generally, we're not able to. We're, we're actually doing really well with the lower elementary, um, do pretty well with middle and high school and probably struggling in terms of these numbers, in terms of grades four, five, and six.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
May I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Um, Ms. Kielibinsky, if you have, um, recommendations that you think this could be written better, you can send them, we're gonna bring this to a second reading, so that's the time to just kind of think it through, but I don't like to live edit, um, here. I, um, I, again, this is just a first reading, we have a motion on the table, um, I recommend we move to a vote.
Is there anything further? I would tend to agree that we should take this as a first reading and then we can bring it back and I'm, I'm kind of on the fence, so.
If people time where to think about it, we can do some more digging.
Yep.
But.
All right. It's moved in second and we'll go to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed?
All right, this one should be.
Madam Chair. Yep, we can just alternate.
I love it.
Uh, Madam Chair, I recommend we re-
You move.
Move a policy IJOA field trip permission slip template.
Second.
Um, as we talked about, uh, we're trying to remove forms and slips from policy because it's not belong there.
All right, motion being seconded. Any discussion? I'm sure we haven't used this in forever. Yeah, Christie?
Um, Madam Chair, yes. Since we do have IJOA policy currently in our MASC manual, there's a, again, a note there, and I'd like the subcommittee to review that because I'm not sure if we should be adding something, not per se a permission slip, but guidelines.
Review.
Review IJOA in the, the one that is currently in our
Okay.
Manual.
Right, thanks, Christie.
Thank you. All right. Anything further on IJOA? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All right, motion carries.
All right, um, we have IJOE2. This is athletic, educational, and extracurricular. I'd like to make a motion. I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, I was laughing at the, I was laughing at the code. I wasn't laughing at you.
I know. I'd like to make a motion, um, that the subcommittee, that the poli-, oh my god, that the school committee remove IJOE2 athletic, educational, extracurricular trip policy chaperone sign off.
Second.
It's a long name. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none.
Again, I would just want to see if this, if anything of this would need to be added to the IJOA policy.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Great.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that the committee, uh, remove, vote to remove policy IKAA tests and examinations.
Hold on.
We, I think we skipped one.
IKAA is first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead.
Well, I have that too.
It's not here in the book.
I have IKAA.
IKAA.
Grading slash assessment systems. Recommend removal.
Sorry.
Nineteen.
It disappeared for me somehow.
All right.
Oh, now I know why. Yep, okay. I recommend the committee vote to remove IKA grading slash assessment systems.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Do you have a reasoning?
Yes, this says nothing. It's not particularly useful and, uh, we will obviously grade and report on grades whether we have this policy or not.
In addition to that, our MASC policy IKB, IKAB, I'm sorry, uh, replaces both our old IKAB and our IKA policies.
Perfect. Anything further? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Excellent.
Now we're at IKAA tests and examinations. Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I recommend we, um, delete IKAA tests and examinations.
Do you move it, though?
I move it and recommend it.
Second.
Excellent. Do you have anything to say on this, policy subcommittee?
Yeah, we don't have, um, finals anymore, and this is supporting, um, an outdated practice.
We also don't have quarters.
We don't have quarters. Many things.
And I just have a quick question. There's no policy like this for any of the other schools, correct? Just the high school?
Yeah.
It's very strange.
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Interesting that you bring that up.
Oh.
We did note at our last meeting, a lot of these policies were kind of geared towards high school at the time, and it, I think maybe this ship has been righted. And, and that's great. Maybe at the time they were needed, but there are a lot more needed. You'll see a lot of these are geared towards that.
And I will say, the longer I'm on this committee, the more I find that it's easy to focus on the high school and, and, you know, not at the detriment necessarily, but we can get caught up in the high school as our kids get older. So I think it's, we should not.
Yep.
Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
I just have a question. I, I agree that this is a high school policy. It should not be in the policy handbook, uh, manual, rather. I do wonder if we should have a policy on tests and examinations. We strive for equitable learning. And as I've noticed throughout the middle school, at the very least, and the elementary school, test retakes and test assessments kind of are very dependent on per teacher that you have. Whereas I might go into Mrs. K's class and I can retake the test if I get below seventy, but Mr. L's class, he can, he'll let you always retake the test. Mr. Q's class, he'll take the higher grade, and the other class will average them together. It doesn't seem equitable, whereas I think that we, we might want to consider placing some sort of policy for such a thing. And this would be the place where it would go.
Madam Chair.
Can I say something first?
Yeah, of course.
Um, but we can, we can remove this now.
Right, bring that.
Make note of it and, and bring a new policy forward.
Yes.
I don't disagree with that. I think it's something worth discussing. Um, but I always, I always want to, want to make sure that we're not telling teachers how to do their jobs. Consistency is, is equity.
Right.
I totally agree with that. Um, I'm not quite sure it's going to be a school committee policy, per se, so much as it is something else. I don't know what that is, but I definitely think it's something we, we should discuss, and I will write that down. But I think tonight we'll focus on, on removing or not removing. Can always bring it back later as something else. That make sense?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Madam. Thank you for mentioning that, Christie, because I do agree. It's, it can be very frustrating.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yep.
That had come up with our students. It's when we have a student advisor too. I just, I was trying to think, I think, yeah.
Yeah, you, it's totally right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the school committee remove
Speak a little louder, please.
Policy IKBR. Recommended for removal. I'm making a motion.
Second.
Motion made seconded. So this is just a table? That went with the homework policy?
It makes no sense.
That this looks like something that should be in a handbook of some sort? Okay. Awesome.
Can I, Madam Chair, may I speak on this? So when I conducted my audit back in April, that was a snapshot in time. And our old policy manual, we actually had two policies coded IKBR. One was a holiday schedule and one was this policy. At the time, in April, the reason IKB-dash-R, the holiday schedule is not included in the audit and part of Dr. Cummings' recommendations is because it was in our MASC manual. Since then, I have noticed that it is no longer in our MASC manual. So I guess I, it's more of a question, how did that get removed from the manual without coming through public, without being brought up to public meeting?
I mean, I think, I think I understand, and I think this is what you've been trying to, like, ask me all along. So my understanding, and like, I admit it, like, I, I should have done all this and, and I didn't. I apologize. I'm glad we're doing it now. I just, when it was pointed out that it hadn't been in, I thought when we originally were moving over, that we were taking all policies that MASC had and all policies that, um, the, that we had reviewed in the past, like, four or so years to try to get caught up. So when it got pointed out that they were, that it wasn't supposed to be there, whatever, I, I removed it to try to get caught up. Um, so, um, you can shit sanction me or take me out to the shed. I don't, I don't know what that punishment is.
Well, here's my, so I guess my question is this. No, no, nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna take you out behind the woodshed, but my question is, um, I feel like the table.
I don't even know where that came from.
I, I was gonna say, I don't even understand how that ended up in there because I remember those discussions and I don't.
Like.
Do you know?
I, I don't know.
I remember the holiday schedule, but I don't remember the holiday schedule being in policy either.
Because it shouldn't be.
Because that's a document that you put out every year because it changes every year. We talked about that.
Right.
I know it, wait, hold on. It was in there. We took it out for that reason.
Yeah.
That I remember, okay. So that was supposed to go.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I do see that the current IKB homework policy does refer to legal or religious holidays, so it's covered.
Yes.
But trying to keep the actual calendar doesn't make sense because it changes, particularly lunar holidays, et cetera, are always different dates.
And, and that's something that comes out of Jay's office to the teachers each year.
Correct.
No, I'm, I'm not saying we should have kept it. I, my, my question is, is how, how did policies get removed without it coming in front of?
Well, I think.
But, but, yeah.
Maybe we can just
Yeah.
let it go. I appreciate all your work on it, and it's been really helpful. Um, I've, I've admitted it.
I, I'm not looking for an admission. I'm just, I was, it was just a question, Mrs. Hoffman.
Okay, well, I answered the question, I think, right? Liz and I did the best we could, and we made some mistakes, and they've been caught, and now we're trying to work through them tonight. So, awesome.
Okay, so IKB homework policy. This, this table of responsibilities. Do we agree that this should not be in here?
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the table.
So can we, are we?
I'm ready to vote.
Everybody else ready to vote?
Ready.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, excellent. That's gone. JFAB is the next one on my list.
This is me. Um, admission of non-resident students, um, re-marcature and removal. We believe it's covered in other policies. Apologize that we didn't, uh, link to what the policies are, which ones they were. So, oh, god, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to remove JFAB admission of non-resident students.
Second.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Motion being seconded. Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns? Excellent. All right, all those in favor of removing this policy? Great. Motion passes. JFABB foreign exchange programs, which.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I move that the school committee, uh, remove policy JFABB foreign exchange programs.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. Go ahead, Leora.
May, uh, basically, these don't exist in this form anymore. There is not a single, if I am correct, Jay, there's not a single school district in Massachusetts at this time that has a foreign exchange.
Correct, because you have to go through the J1 visa post nine eleven. It's, it's not the mom and pop operation.
That it was.
Once was, at least when I was a kid. Now it's a multimillion dollar, um,
Yep.
Very complex.
So this does not preclude one of our students from choosing to go to Spain for a semester or, you know, undertake their own program, but we are not having the formal exchange because they really, um, legally can't happen in the way that we've known them. Yep.
We do have Operation Friendship, though.
Yes.
And that's a great opportunity for folks looking for foreign exchange type programs, but it's not through the Grafton Public Schools. All right, any comments, questions, concerns with removing this policy? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Excellent.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to remove JFC student withdrawal from school.
Second.
Sorry, are there any comments, concerns on this one? We need to remove it just because of the coding, and that's all I'm gonna say. Little bit offensive.
Anymore.
I know, I know. It was the first thing.
I didn't even think of that.
There you are.
I'm laughing at Massachusetts transfer code.
I don't know what that is. It probably hasn't existed since two thousand and three.
Or earlier.
Or ever.
I know.
All right, any comments, questions, concerns with removing this policy? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, gone. JHBB.
JHBB student attendance monitoring and accounting. Uh, oh, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I move that the committee, uh, remove policy JHBB student attendance monitoring and accounting.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Is there anything the committee would like to say? Subcommittee would like to say?
I would like to say something smart, but I'm not on.
Is the policy subcommittee gonna say anything to start this off, or are we gonna? All right, go ahead, Chris. Christie, go ahead.
Okay, so we've adopted the MASC policy JH, absences and excuses. And just to be sure, to be clear, that was on our list of policies not to be switched over to MASC, but it actually was switched over. As such, that policy encompasses JHBB, the one that we're looking at now. It also encompasses our old JH. And in addition to that, it encompasses policy JE attendance K through twelve. So I do have a few recommendations. First, I do agree that we should get rid of this. However, we should also consider eliminating policy JE because it's encompassed now in our new policy JH. And our new policy JH should be reviewed and presented to the board because that, we never voted to accept the MASC version of that. In addition to that, there are decency requirements in the JH's policy that need to be taken under account.
Okay. Thank you. Any, anything further on removing JHBB, which for some reason is twice.
It's twice, okay. I'm like, I'm not going nuts.
I thought it was crazy.
Really liked it.
Awesome. All right, seeing no further questions, comments, or concerns, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed, abstentions? Great. JICB.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We'd like to, uh, make a motion to bring JICB care of school property by students as a first reading.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Anything from the committee first?
We thought this was important to bring back. It's kind of a CYA, make sure kids, that people knew that there were, they would be expected to held.
To be financially responsible.
Thank you. Thank you. Held responsible. Thanks for all of my words.
I don't disagree, um, but there's an Oxford comma missing. The first sentence of the second paragraph, and I'm only calling it out because all the other Oxford commas are there.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I make a comment on this?
Sure.
We have MASC policy JI, which states the rights and responsibilities of students, including the standards of conduct will be made available to the students and their parents and guardians through handbooks distributed annually. I believe this could be just a handbook item since we have JI.
Well, we can take this as a first reading and then let the subcommittee look at it and decide if it says the same thing.
Cool.
Yep.
I think it's worth looking at.
Agreed.
I recommend we take a vote.
Anything further? All those in favor of accepting this as a first reading? All those opposed? That's four one. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The committee, uh, the policy subcommittee, like the school committee, I'm talking way too much. A tie move.
Yep.
That the committee, uh, remove policy JICH alcohol drug possession or use by students specifically that breathalyzer testing protocol.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Motion made in the seconded. Yes, go ahead.
I just, um, Jay, I'd like you to comment on this one because we had, this is the breathalyzer.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, sure. Um, I, this came about, it was kind of a big deal at the time, I believe. It was before I started, so it was at least fourteen, fifteen years ago. Um, I think it, I believe it was in reaction or a result of, uh, dance in which, a high school dance in which there was drinking. Um, in the fourteen years that I've been here, we, I believe we still own a breathalyzer, but we have never utilized it, and I have no intentions of us utilizing it going forward. You'd have to have trained staff who are giving up, not just coming to a dance, but now they're attending the dance to chaperone and breathalyze kids. They have to be trained. You have to have calibrated breathalyzer, et cetera. If we do or did in the future ever believe that a student was under the influence of anything, we have a police officer on duty. We're accessing that police officer, working with him or her to determine next steps, work with parents, et cetera. So, um, which is, obviously, the, the committee can choose to keep it, but in practice, this is not something that has been or will be utilized uh, in the foreseeable future.
As much as I hate to contradict you, uh, this actually was used for the homecoming dance last fall. Students were required to fill out.
Oh, maybe to fill it out, but.
The form?
If we ever recalled on it, we didn't have a breathalyzer. We did not breathalyze the kids. And having kids sign off on a breathalyzer thing, eh, you can do that all day. Um, when we rented for like the prom at uh, yeah, it was at DCU, with that package, you you get a uh basically like security staff. Um, so that may have been tied to what you're thinking of. Um, and occasionally when we have gone offsite, so not a Grafton High School, a Grafton High School event, but offsite, um, they may privately utilize a breathalyzer. I don't I don't remem- I remember going to DCU. I don't remember the breathalyzer piece.
Well, the problem this past year was at a different facility. But.
And I can, for the, we could put it a hold on it and I can find out about the DCU center and.
Yeah, I'm 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 kind of uncomfortable pulling this out right now because I feel like if we pull it out and we decide we need to use it, now we don't have the protocol and we've got to bring that back before we can test kits. I don't like the idea of doing that, but I I kind of want more information before we before we remove. So can we hold on that and we'll bring that back?
If it does happen, obviously, I could get hit by a bus tomorrow, but.
No.
Few years ago, when this was in place, in the community, we we had a dance, dances never. The most wonderful thing in the world, but we had a less than optimal dance. And rather, there was a cry for, yeah, breathalyzer, do this, do that, and we concluded that the fabric of the the school community at that time wasn't just in a place to have a dance, so we canceled the next dance. Um, and on one hundred times out of a hundred times, as long as I'm here, that's that's what we'll do.
We had a lengthy discussion, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, just a lengthy discussion on this. I'm I'm happy to hold. Um, we went back and forth for a while. My big concern about this policy, and we can edit it, is I don't want our uh administrators um, giving breathalyzer tests. I don't think they're.
Yeah.
It's an appropriate thing to put them in. Um, and I know they do, they did have to sign and everything, but yeah, we, I shouldn't talk because we can just hold it and.
I don't think we should be asking students to sign stuff i- as an empty threat. That doesn't seem smart. But yeah, let's, could somebody withdraw that motion, please?
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you very much.
Cool.
Who had the second?
Was it me? I withdraw my second.
Thank you very much. We'll hold on that. Thank you, guys. Um, JICJ.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We would like to bring JICJ use of electronic devices in school. As a first reading. If we went back and, yeah, as a first reading. We, yeah.
You gonna move it?
Mm-hmm, I mean, make the motion.
Excellent. There we go. Made, motion made seconded. Okay, so I remember talking about this before. So where do we stand? Was this just one that needs to be re-repackaged?
We we do think this is gonna, we're gonna work on it more.
Okay.
But as of now, we were comfortable bringing it just for the start of the year. Um, we would like to dive into it a little bit more. There's been discussions all over the country. We think we can do some real meaningful policy work. But um, it's fine the way it is. We think we could improve it, um, but it'll take some, it's gonna take work. Work, and so as is, it's great or good enough.
Okay.
Um, so we're bringing it as a first reading, um, and then, you know, you'll you'll be seeing it again.
All right, well, in the interest of time, I'm not gonna get into my comments on it. But yeah. Moved in, I have I have thoughts, but I'll hold those for tonight.
Yeah, we love to, I think it's gonna be a bigger deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot to do there.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? So we're gonna put this back. All right, all those in favor?
Once we voted as a second reading.
Yes.
We're not doing anything tonight.
Excellent, okay. JJDIR.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that the school committee remove policy JJD dash one R student activity account regulations.
Second.
Seconded. Explanation? Is there one?
Really.
Not really.
I feel like it was covered, there's something.
It, yeah.
Madam Chair, may I speak on this?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so we have adopted the MASC policy JJEF. Uh, it's called the Student Activities Account, which encompasses the spirit of this JJD, uh, I mean dash R one. The difference is that the MASC policy provides kind of a high level overview of the Student Activity Fund Management, while our old one detailed the specific specific procedures, deposit limits, documentation requirements for handling of these funds. On this policy specifically, I do not think we need to, because we didn't have JJEF before. So I don't think we need to, just on this policy, vote to accept the policy which we now currently holding in our manual JJEF. Because I think we can, it's so similar, I think we can even chalk it up to a policy coding issue. So if it is that you wanna remove this policy, then you would then have to also remove in our current manual JJEF because it is the same policy.
I guess what I would say in response to that is that we would be removing this because it's repetitive, not because we're not doing it.
Okay, so that's right.
Yeah, so this one we can get rid of, and then we have.
You have JJEF. So my question, since we were talking.
Yep.
On JJEF, there's a DESI audit guideline in that policy. So I guess my question is to Dr. Cummings on this. Do we audit? The accounts?
We audit and get audited every year.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the, I think the JJEF is a lot cleaner.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good job. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor of removal? All right, motion carries. Page two. We're over halfway there. Seven, seven, I'm sorry, that's not a seven, that's a J, good grief. JJI dash E parental permission and release.
I forget who's term, I think it's yours.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to remove JJI parental permission and release from liability and indemnity.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? This is a form. We don't want forms. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. JJJ.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that the committee delete policy JJJ extracurricular activity eligibility.
Second.
Discussion.
Jay, I think you kind of summed this one up really well, too.
Yep.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah, I don't know if you're.
We wanted the the more, generally, the more part- participation, the better. That first paragraph, they talk about one half of the academic day. Uh, some of that does hold true for the MIAA stuff, but that's that's well covered. We're we're all set with that. But somebody who has to go to a doctor's appointment or a counselor appointment in Boston, doesn't get back till the second half of the day. That individual going to a club that kind of keeps them coming to school every day in the afternoon, I think that's great. The same with the academic eligibility. We do all the time have to use our professional judgment for and work with the parents, same vein. Depending on how, it's not every student that has all As can go to sports or clubs. Um, but sure, of course, the student who is just off the rails, doing horribly, A, probably isn't dying to go to a lot of clubs if they're really struggling. But we want them to focus on extra help and getting them, getting them going. Typically, we come up with an individualized plan. So having a policy that dictates that kind of over the top, I I think is inappropriate.
And I will say also, Madam Chair, that um, policy JJI at least covers student athletic academic eligibility and that exists um in our policies today, so.
And I noted this policy refers to fourth quarter grades, which.
Which don't exist.
Don't exist for the high schools, so.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
In addition to that, uh, the guidelines could be added to the policy JJ. Uh, MASC makes note that you could add something to this effect in that policy that we currently hold co-curricular and extracurricular activities.
There it is.
Nice. So this this really is.
This policy should be eliminated.
Okay.
Why it was deleted.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of deleting? All right. Motion carries. JLA student insurance program.
Madam Chair, I move that uh the committee recommend, uh, the committee remove uh JLA student insurance program.
Second.
Uh, we don't have this.
It does not exist. Do do school districts have student access?
Before, eh, like in in mass, obviously, now everybody should be covered by insurance, but when that wasn't the case, school districts were often in almost the insurance business.
It's horrifying.
Um, any comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor of deletion? Thank you. She carries. JLCE first aid and emergency medical care.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that the committee remove JLCE first aid and emergency medical care.
Second.
Motion made seconded. I see it says it's covered under JLCD. Is this this wording where it says covered under JLCD recommend removal?
Oh, that's just, my parentheses are wrong.
Okay, all right, so you're not gonna remove that, you're removing this. Okay, got it. No, no, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
There you, you do.
Excellent, all right. Um, comments, questions, yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I, I've read this numerous times and I've read JLCD, and I don't think that they're the same. JLCD focuses on administration of medication to students, self-inducing self-administration and emergency medications, while JLCE addresses the provisions of first aid and emergency medical care for accidents of sudden illnesses. They're not the same. That being said, we have accepted MASC policy EBV, which is first aid. We didn't have that before. So I believe that JLCE can be replaced with EBV if, since we didn't have that policy before, we would probably have to vote on it. But if you feel like we wanna get rid of the first aid policy altogether, then we need to get rid of EBV as well.
But we're holding EBV now.
We are holding EBV right now, but we had never voted on it.
Okay.
Oh, and in addition to this, it says that it's under JLCD. I've looked at the JLCD policy in our manual, and for whatever reason, we're holding that as our own GPS old version of it. But there's little, if any, difference between that and the MASC version. In an effort to streamline, as we're trying to utilize the MASC service, I think that we should switch this policy JLCD into the MASC version.
Okay, we can take a look at that. I know why we kept it.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
We can take a look on it.
All right.
I mean, I don't, I think we're good.
I agree that, I agree that we should delete JLCE. So are there any other questions, concerns, comments on that? That's just the first aid emergency medical care piece. It's repeated in EBV. All right, all those in favor? All those opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, JLDBB, wow. Threat assessment policy.
So it just said, it's like, oh, go ahead, oh, no, no, go ahead.
Um.
Wait, where is that?
I might get on hold on this.
Okay.
We might wanna hold it.
Is this how I, how it written?
Just don't make the motion.
Yeah.
You wanna move on?
Skip it.
Okay. Moving on to JFL. Child abuse and neglect reporting. Oh, I know why.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I move that the committee remove policy JLF child abuse and neglect reporting.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any word from the committee on this? Comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, I have concerns. So in our old policy manual, we had two policies with the code JLF. One was JLF child abuse neglect reporting. And the second was JF, JLF child abuse and neglect reporting mass general law. So my worry with eliminating JLF was that we must be in compliance with the legal requirements and procedures for reporting suspected child abuse and neglect as required by Mass General Law one nineteen, section fifty-one A. So I decided to do a little research, and it seems as though our new policy JL, the child welfare, does make mention of this mass general law, but I would like the policy subcommittee to take a look at JL and see if they're in agreement that that policy covers us with our compliance of the Mass General Law, chapter one nineteen, section fifty-one A.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further on JLF? Please remember that that does not mean we will not report child abuse, everyone. In the larger, it's simply repetitive policy. We are required by law to report abuse.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, great. JLI.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion that the committee re- delete JLI student safety. Second.
We'd like them to run wild and play with knives.
I promise you, we're gonna keep all of the students safe, everyone. We're not. It's not what this is.
Throwing it out.
Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns on this one?
I do have a concern on this one. I don't think that we should delete it. I think a student safety policy ensures consistent and accountable practices across the district. It provides clear emergency protocols and it fosters effective communication with parents. It also helps us meet legal requirements and facilitates regular updates to adapt to an evolving safety needs. I do not believe we should be deleting this policy.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I feel that it is covered in JL and this is repetitive.
In JL?
Yes. Student welfare. There's a section, um, as there is a section on reporting child abuse, there's also a section on student safety.
Student safety.
Yeah, safety.
I see it, yeah, I got it. It is very specific. Which is good. Anyone else have anything? Any other comments, questions, concerns? I read JL, um, I'm prepared to support a deletion. I think it covers everything we needed to. Comments, questions, concerns, one last time. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Four to one. JLI B dismissal dismissal precautions.
Madam Chair, I move that committee uh remove policy JLI B dismissal precautions.
I second that.
Motion made seconded. Any further, any discussion on this one?
I have a question on this one. Um, is this redundant? Is there policy that we have somewhere else on our policies for dismissing students?
No.
No.
We thought it was more of a procedural thing than a policy. Uh, obviously, it's important. Um, we don't want people to be, um, but each school has different procedures, um, and we think it's it's covered in there.
Okay.
How they do it.
Okay.
That was our recommendation.
Yep.
And it does seem like it would be different for elementary versus high school. I just wanted to clarify that. And it does seem like it would be different for elementary versus high school. I just wanted to clarify that.
Got, thank you, that, that was.
Yep.
Is this a handbook item, Madam Chair? Is it in the handbook? In handbooks? Dr. Cummings, thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, and it is very different for each school. I mean, I know for a fact that, yeah, this, this seems like it's very elementary school focused.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, things are a little more, I hesitate to use the word relaxed at the high school, um, but students at the high school are given more agency, um, as they should be, especially, uh, children who reach the age of eighteen, for example. I have no objection to removing it. Any other concerns, questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion carries. JM.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I make a motion to remove JM Student Awards, Honors, and Scholarships.
Second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this one? It's odd.
It, exactly.
Kristi looks afraid of it.
That's, it's weird. It's absurd.
No, we're not gonna recognize students.
Eh, not saying we shouldn't recognize students. It's just a very odd policy to be kept in the policy book.
It is a policy.
It's not.
Hundred percent.
All right. All those in favor? All right. Go on. JRE Emergency Card, another form that probably has been used a million years. Go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I move that the committee remove JRE Emergency Card.
Second.
Motion made and seconded and discussion. Seeing none, 'cause it's a form, we're gonna move to a vote. All those in favor? All right.
Yeah, it's in power school.
What?
It's in power school. You do, you do do this.
Yes.
Yeah, of course, do.
And it's very different now.
But there's no card.
No.
No.
JRA dash L, Student Records, MGL.
Well, that's exact, oh. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I recommend, uh, uh, I move the committee remove JRAL Student Records, MGL.
I second that motion.
Discussion.
This is basically MGL. It's not policy. It's just laws.
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this MGL is covered under policy JRA. We don't need a separate policy for it.
Even better. Any further discussion?
It's very long.
So let's delete it. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Excellent. You're almost there. KD.
Oh my gosh.
Hold on. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I make a motion to delete KD Public Information and Communications. We believe that it is covered elsewhere.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion.
It's covered in KA.
Thank you.
It's covered in.
All the K's.
Yeah, mostly KA, but there's also KBA. It touches on it. It, it's addressed in multiple places.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So we have adopted policy KDB Public Rights to Know, which in, does in fact encompass KD, the Public Information and Communication, but it's a broader context. So while both policies keep to the community informed, the MASC policy KDB is more about ensuring legal compliance with public records, whereas our old KD is about proactive communication, um, yeah, communication and community engagement. Given this, I do agree that we should write, delete it. However, since we did not have KDB before, I believe the policy subcommittee needs to bring that back to the board for a reading to officially adopt it.
KBB. I apologize. I'm looking at the wrong thing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. KEC Public Complaints About Instructional Resources.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I move, what are we? I move that the committee remove. No, are we, sorry.
Yeah, I wanna hold on that.
We're gonna hold this?
I didn't make any notes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we were gonna rem, remove it. We just talked about this.
I don't think we were gonna remove it. Yeah, so I don't wanna, yeah.
I have questions on that one, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, let's hold.
Okay.
KEC.
Uh, KEC dash EI, E1, excuse me. Sample letter to complainant.
So those are the pieces of it, I think.
Don't want forms in our policy.
Right. So those are the forms that go with KEC? And I think it's the forms we want removed, not the policy.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we do them both as one motion? Wouldn't that be lovely?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I move that the committee remove KEC E1 and KEC E2.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none?
That they're forms.
Yes. Seeing none, I was, I was on top of it. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All right.
Yeah, I, I don't think we even wanted to, oh, no. Never mind.
Uh, KF dash R Facility Rental. Old. LBC dash one Relations With Non-Public Schools.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, delete LBC one Relations With Non-Public Schools Policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So the reason that Dr. Cummings included this on his listing was because it was on my audit, but it was not actually intended as a missing policy. It was just 'cause I couldn't find the backup material and I had noted that in there. In reality, this policy, we have adopted LBC from MASC, Relations With Non-Public Schools, so we do have the policy, and I do not recommend eliminating that policy at all. Where is my notes? Because we must be in compliance with MGL, Chapter 76, Section 1, and our new LBC fulfills that requirement, so we don't wanna, this policy shouldn't have been even considered. It was not a missing policy. It was, I couldn't receive the backup on the policy.
So we're voting to remove this one, though, right?
No. Well, no, it's, it's just this policy has just moved over to LBC. It's a coding thing. It's not, there's not a, this, this, this is not a missing policy. We have this policy. It was just a coding change. The coding changed. It's late. Right, it's just a coding change and we switched over. It got flagged because I couldn't, I didn't have the backup, and I couldn't double check that this was. And so in the flagging in the audit, as I had shown, in my audit, I had mentioned it. I don't, I don't know, uh, Dr. Cummings probably missed it.
It's probably your fault, Jack. He'll have to take you behind the woodshed also, I guess.
All right, I confirm that it's there, so do you recommend we're just?
Withdraw the motion.
Yeah, withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
Whoever said it.
It was Leora. All right.
Uh, can I ask a question? Sorry.
Yes.
I, I know nobody wants to hear from me, but here we are. We're in it, doing it. Uh, we did, uh, the policy subcommittee did review KFE dash one. I don't know why it wasn't put on this list. Their recommendation was to delete it. This is just a form. I'm okay with deleting it. I, eh, in looking at this this evening. We had, they had looked it over.
Okay, read, read it slower, please.
KF dash E1. Application For Use Of Facilities.
We're holding on that.
We're holding the whole thing.
KFR, we're holding it. The, the whole thing is being held.
The whole thing is being held.
Yes.
Yeah, just 'cause it was.
Yeah.
Can, hold on. Shoot.
I see what you're saying.
I had spoken with Dr. Cummings yesterday and he suggested that I bring this over. So we currently have MASC KF dash R Community Use Of Facilities in our policy manual. The reason the old policy was listed as missing is because MASC, the, eh, what we had in MASC was the old version as a fee schedule. That being said, policy KF dash R has a note. So we have the MASC policy right now, just so that we are all on the same page on that. And there's, there are notes in that. And the fee schedule, which we didn't have there, MASC is recommending that we do put that in as a, as a new number KG dash E.
Okay, why don't we hold? We'll, we'll continue to hold.
But I just wanted to give you that information as recommended to me.
Okay. All right, congratulations, everyone. We made it through the policy portion, and people are still awake.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your patience with us and help. Appreciate it.
All right, contract approval. Um, we are very pleased to have come to terms with two bargaining units. We will look at those contracts tonight and hopefully we will approve their signature. Um, I guess we'll do the custodial contract first. Do you wanna go ahead?
Sure. Absolutely. Uh, so, um, we put together just a few, uh, slides that summarizes the, um, the changes. You've been provided with, um, the MOA, but we just wanted to give you an opportunity to, um, kinda see it side by side, and then the next slide we'll go over just the, um, updated language, um, that we have. So, um, here you kind of have your split screen. Um, we're moving with, um, a three-year contract, twenty-four to twenty-seven, at three percent, three percent, three percent. Um, the, the changes, um, here on the right-hand side of your screen, the town actually requested that we add the direct deposit language into all of our collecting bargaining agreements for ease of processing. Um, there were not many employees who weren't using that already, um, so the unit did agree to do that. Um, an update of just changing the required amount of days that we have to have a posting from seven to ten days, the argument being some of the folks in the unit might be on vacation or something like that. Um, that really won't change many of our operating, um, systems. Um, we did increase the clothing stipend. Um, currently, in the past, um, contracts, they've received a stipend of three hundred and fifty. We just, um, increased it to four hundred and fifty. Cost of living and clothing costs have gone up. Um, we increased, uh, Juneteenth has always been recognized as a holiday. It just wasn't in the language, so we just included that in the language. Um, and we increased New Year's Eve to a full-day holiday. Um, it really didn't make sense to have them there on the morning of New Year's Eve. Um, and we were kind of all in agreement of that. Um, we also increased their sick time accrual. Um, they currently are receiving one and a quarter days of sick time accrued per month. Um, there was a lot of discussion about, um, front-loading the sick time, um, versus, um, staying with the accrual. We did decide to continue with the accrual, um, and also the implementation of a sick leave incentive program, um, which is kind of our way of incentivizing them not to feel the need to call out sick. Um, it's outlined in, um, the documents that you have, but it's also our way of kind of celebrating those members of the unit who don't abuse their sick time, um, and they agreed to that as well. Um, and then an increase in longevity. Um, the years stayed the same. Uh, we just increased the amounts, um, of longevity. Any questions about any of that so far?
Nope.
Okay. Um, so these are just some updates to the language. A lot of our discussion, at least the primary, their, the primary discussion was about just cleaning up the language. The union came to us with language regard, regarding their union membership dues, um, and how they are processing that. So there is a lot of changes in the language, but it's really not going to impact, um, like I said, our day-to-day operations. Um, so that's Article 3 and Article 5. Um, Article 10 is another example of that streamlined language. It specified times of their shifts, but depending on which building you work in, your shift is slightly different by maybe a half hour, so it didn't really make sense to have that specific time. Um, we also had a situation this past year where we actually, um, the Christmas holiday falling on a Sunday and then, or, or on a Monday, whatever, they get Christmas Eve off and then Christmas Day off, and there was not clear language in the contract about what happens in that scenario. Um, so we just, we clarified that. Um, and then the rest of it, again, is just, um, making sure that, moving forward, um, the, the contract is easy to understand and, um, yeah, discontinuation of the COVID-19 MOA and things like that. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the audience? Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
Great.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Agreement Between the Town, A Graft, and School Committee and AFSCME Council 93 Local 1709 Custodians from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I would just like to say how much we appreciate our custodians. We could not run our six buildings uh, without all of you, and I hope you're all very happy with this contract. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Abstentions? There we go. Motion carries 401.
Great work.
Yes, good work to the team on that.
Very good work, yes.
Congratulations, Mandy.
Thanks. I know, it was a big deal. Yeah. Um, yeah, today's, today's a great night. Um, we're ready to move on to the teachers. It's gonna be the similar format um, of that split screen. Um, the, the teacher negotiations, we had, um, a different approach, as you all know. Um, I think the feedback all across the board was very positive of the conversations that we had. I think they were meaningful. I think they were impactful. Um, and the teachers who were furiously signing the MOA in the past couple of days so that we could have this conversation tonight, on tonight's agenda, were all s, all just really wanted to share how appreciative they were of the school committee and the approach that we took with them. Um, so again, it's gonna be a three-year contract. Um, that first three percent is, um, on paper, that's what we've budgeted for, but we did, um, move forward with that reorganization of the salary scale, so, um, it's a little wonky in that department. Um, but three, three, three for the next three years. Um, we did increase the number of days in the school year for the teachers from one eighty-two to one eighty-three. The goal for that would be to have two days before the school year starts for the students to allow teachers some time to prepare. Um, we're aware of the fact that the calendar has already been approved for next year, so we have no intention of having the teachers come in on that Friday. Um, so we'll determine, um, what makes sense for this coming year, but that is the ultimate goal, to have, um, that extra preparation time. Um, with the additional day, and as you can see further down, some additional time allotted to after-school meetings, we did agree to reduce the school day by five minutes. Um, so the teacher school day, um, historically has been seven hours, and we've reduced it by five minutes to six hours and fifty-five minutes. Um, and that, um, got everyone on the same page in terms of that addition of, um, ten extra hours in after-school meetings. Um, we're going to establish a committee with, um, with some members of the unit, as well as administration, to determine what those meetings will look like and what they, uh, will cover. Um, the major discussion really was the reorganization of the salary scale. You heard John and Karen when they came and spoke with you at the very beginning of the process, that that was the big piece that they were advocating for. We had a twenty-four-step salary schedule with those paused steps at years twelve, fifteen, and twenty. And so we did a lot of work to figure out a new salary schedule, um, that eliminated that. So that's exactly what we did. We now have a fourteen-step. We don't have a step one, so it goes up to step fifteen. Um, and then we established a, what we're calling a super step, um, which is our recognition of folks who have essentially paid their dues. They're already at the top of the salary schedule, um, in fiscal year twenty-four, so we wanted to make sure that they were being recognized, that they were also getting an equitable cost of living increase as well. Um, and then we did an, an overhaul of longevity. Um, our teachers will now be reaching the top step um, at year fifteen or fourteen, so, um, they then would become COLA-dependent, and so we wanted to recognize um, their longevity at that point, so starting at sixteen years, and we're moving from just a one-time, um, you know, twenty-six years of service and over, you get this amount to more of a tiered approach. So the longer you're with us, the more money you get. I will note that this is an annual longevity payment, um, and it is pensionable. for our teachers, which is great, too, for them. Questions on any of that?
Any questions for the committee? I have one very small question. When you talk about this additional day in the twenty-four, twenty-five year, how do you think you're gonna use that day? If it's not gonna be for beginning of the year prepping, have you given any thought to what you're gonna use it for?
Some form of mid-year professional development, which we just don't have now.
Okay, okay, cool. Yeah, I was just curious. I didn't know if it was gonna be like for grades or like...
Probably not.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And then just the, the clarifying language. It's all in the redlined document that we provided you with. I'm happy to speak to any of this if anyone has any questions.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Very pleased to make the motion to accept the Memorandum of Agreement between the Grafton School Committee and our Grafton Teachers Association. That's fiscal year twenty twenty-five, but for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Congratulations to the team. It's a little nerve-wracking at first, being on the outside looking in, but you guys did a great job. And I'm so happy to hear that the teachers are happy. We definitely want happy teachers. And if I had my way, we would give you way more money, but we don't have it. So we thank you for your service and we thank you for being so amenable to the terms. We wish everybody a great three years under this contract. Anything else? Move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? There we go. Four zero one. Yes?
Dr. Cummings, since there will be a time difference for our families, are you gonna send out a communication?
Numerous communications.
Awesome. I figure you want on it.
If, if the chair doesn't mind, I just want to thank the GTA leadership for their willingness to try a new approach to negotiating. I'm sure everybody in this room is well aware of the challenges statewide and nationally with teacher negotiations over the past year or two. They've been notoriously difficult. And we, we avoided that beautifully. And it couldn't have been more productive, structured to be a win-win. And it worked out great. So a huge thank you to them.
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'd also just like to shout out to Mandy. This is her first year in the position and she had, I know we're not finished in all of them, so we'll probably say it again, but getting these two contracts. I know, I know. We're halfway there.
Thank you.
I, I worked on both of these with you and it was a pleasure to work with you and not easy to do in your first year.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And amazing Excel skills.
Oh, thank you, yes. I have to say, I did learn a lot through the process.
You always do, right?
All right. We are in the home stretch. Do we have any member reports this evening?
I'd just like to report that my children are at the enrichment programs up here and they're lovely. Everybody's having a great time. Big shout out to Mr. Carney for opening up his building to us. And I get to see him on a little bit of a basis now. So that's my only member report.
Anybody else have member reports? I have a little shout out. It's a little out of scope, but I would like to shout out to the Massachusetts Public Schools, who gave us two bronze medal Olympic champions. If you don't know, if you live under a rock, we have a student, a former student from Stoughton and a former student from Worcester Tech, who brought home the bronze medal in men's gymnastics team for the first time in sixteen years. And we're very excited. Anytime that public schools get a shout out, it's been all over the papers. Public schools work. And we're so happy for them and we're happy for those school districts that are getting time on the news. And we look forward to the day when, you know, maybe we have our own Olympic champion. An Olympic hopeful. Excellent. We did have correspondence from Jerry Murrows, the Massachusetts Associate of Gifted Education. I would like to thank him for coming tonight and for submitting the very helpful correspondence that will go into the permanent record. Is there anything else? I declare this meeting adjourned. Good night, Grafton.
Night.
Thank you.